Okay, next on our agenda is Michelle Black. Michelle's with the Department of Education and she's going to explain to us all about the West Virginia Next Generation Standards.
Yes.
And I'm sure we may have to wait.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks for coming down.
I'm going to do my best to sit and operate this, but I don't know if I can. I don't know if I can sit still or not when I'm trying to talk, but I'm going to do my best.
You do whatever you feel you would like to do. You have two helpers there apparently.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's good or bad. Are the lights okay? Do you want to dim those or anything?
There it's kind of.
Are they going to be?
John, maybe turn off all the lights. But I do appreciate the opportunity to speak to the board and Mrs. Lewis's invitation just to really clarify some of the misconceptions that are out there. The Next Generation Standards have, you know, we've been talking about them for several years, but just recently have they started garnering this negative publicity. So, you know, to start with, it's important to know that, you know, standards really drive improvement for everyone in West Virginia. Standards are not anything new to West Virginia. Our students have Next Generation Standards, which is, you know, the focus of today, and that's simply what we expect students to know and be able to do at different grade levels. That's what our standards tell us. But then our teachers and principals also have standards that they're held accountable for. In 2009, we adopted the professional teaching standards so that our teachers would know what we expect from them as they are preparing our students for the Next Generation Standards and doing what, you know, is expected of them. And then the following year, 2010, we really took a hard look at what do we expect from our school leaders? And we called it "school leaders" because of the importance of not just saying the principal standards, but we want the assistant principals and others that take on those leadership roles in schools to also be able to know what we expect of them. And then finally, for several years through our school improvement office, we've had our high-quality standards for schools. So you can see from this that there are standards for individuals and then for schools. And when we think about what we expect our schools to do, implementing, you know, all of those standards for students, teachers, and principals is going to play into what makes a good school. And when we think about our standards, you know, we want these to be things that we measure. Of course, you know, with the principal and the teacher standards, we're really looking at our new educator evaluation system as far as the success of those individuals meeting it. And then for our students, thinking about our summative assessments, but also our benchmark assessments and our formative assessments that our teachers create as to how successful our students are on the standards. And all of those really play in to our high-quality standards, which guides the work of continuous improvement in our schools. I just kind of wanted to, you know, make sure that you are aware that, you know, there are standards at all levels. It's not just with our students. And feel free to stop me at any time and I can take questions.
Okay, let me just interject one question I have here.
Okay.
The term "core curriculum," does that relate to this? And if so, how are we, are they one and the same? I mean, we hear that all across the country.
Right.
This debate, I mean, are we, how do the West Virginia standards fit into that terminology?
Okay, if you'll give me just a minute, I'm going to get to that.
Okay.
One of the things, we do have a history of standards. Our Next Generation Standards, or as you reference, you know, the Core Standards, the Common Core, you know, this isn't something new for West Virginia. Years ago, we had the Instructional Goals and Objectives, which our teachers refer to as Igos. Then in 2008, when we tried transitioning to the 21st Century Learning Initiative and the Learning and Technology Skills, we updated those to be the 21st Century Content Standards and Objectives, the CSOs, and said, this is the late, Next Gen Standards is the latest rendition of, you know, the West Virginia Standards and how we know that we need to move forward in, you know, in preparing our students. So here's the question you're kind of asking, sir. So why change again? Why do we keep changing our standards? And, you know, the short answer is, we want to make sure that our students are getting the very best education they can in West Virginia. There was a, the great concern with all of the changes from our legislature, business leaders, parents, that we really weren't preparing our students for college or careers. They were graduating from our schools, they were going into colleges, and 32% of the students were taking remedial courses, which meant they did not get credit for those courses they were taking. So parents were putting out money in that freshman year to get our students up to where they needed to be to be successful in that freshman year of college. And then we also started looking at, but 23% of our students did not return for a second year. So obviously, as a state, we were not preparing our students to succeed in college and to be successful. Another concern was we were covering a lot of curriculums. We were covering a lot of stuff, but we weren't really teaching any of those things to mastery. Most of us have heard the saying that, you know, we were, you know, a mile wide and an inch deep. We were throwing lots of stuff at them. We were ensuring that if they had a math textbook, they would go from beginning to end in a year, but we really weren't ensuring that they were learning the skills they needed to be successful at the next level. And all of those things were keeping our West Virginia graduates from really being competitive, not only in college, but in careers. And we know there's, you know, a lot of publicity, a lot of information out there about this global world we live in and the competition that's out there. And we think our students are just as able and just have the capabilities just of any other state to perform at high levels and to succeed in college and to succeed in any career that they choose. So that was the reason we started looking at, what are we doing wrong? Why are we getting these percentages with remedial courses? You know, why are our students not succeeding? Why are businesses calling, you know, local boards or the State Department and saying, "We're hiring graduates and they can't do the basic things that we are asking them to do." So that's what brought us to the Next Generation Standards. We knew from the data we were seeing, some of which I just shared with you, that we really had to have a clear and focused standards for our kids. Our teachers really needed to know, what is it we expect a kindergarten student to know and be able to do at the end of kindergarten? And how can we provide our teachers the opportunity to build that deeper understanding and get those students to mastery, you know, on those critical skills? And then the next three that you see there on the screen as far as critical thinking skills, problem-solving, and writing skills, these were all things that were coming back to us, not only from higher ed and our institutions, but from our businesses. You're giving us students that can't think critically. We've spent, you know, they can't problem solve if we give them a problem. The only writing they can do is the writing that they've had to do for their online writing assessment. So it was very stringent in the things, you know, or very tight in the things that our students were able to do because unfortunately, with No Child Left Behind, we were truly teaching to a test. We were making sure our students had the ability to take a test. And I think we all have seen where that has got us, exactly not where we want to be. So when we think about the Next Generation Standards, we're really thinking about, what are the natural progressions for how children learn? What does my, I have a daughter in 10th grade. What does she need to know in her 10th grade math class in order to be successful when she moves to 11th grade? What basis does that kindergarten student have to have in order to, you know, succeed in first grade? So the Next Generation Standards really look at those natural progressions that all of our students go through. This gets to your concern about, you know, we hear the, you know, these are not West Virginia standards. These are national standards. One of the things that's important to note in our standards is, we were involved in the very beginning from what we've adapted to the West, to the Next Generation, but we were involved in the very beginning with the Common Core work. We actually had our governor, our state superintendent, many department staff, and a lot of teachers that actually helped craft the Common Core version, you know, of our standards. They were involved in those meetings and those conversations. MDC were part of those task force, you know, from the very beginning. But then once those were finalized, we brought in approximately 100 teachers, and we actually did a crosswalk with those 21st Century Content Standards and Objectives to what was the Common Core standards, looking to see where are the gaps? What are the pieces that are missing? Do we need to add? Do we need to change? You know, what does that alignment look like? And what our teachers found was that this really put the standards that we have in a more sequential order, like I say, with those natural progressions for kids. So, you know, our teachers were, you know, were pleased. For years, I taught middle school reading and, you know, I had pages and pages and pages of standards that were like this, you know, paragraphs long, and you're thinking, you had to like read and reread those content standards and objectives to say, what exactly is it that I'm supposed to be making sure this child can do? And these are very clear and concise, and the teacher can see exactly what that student needs to do as they move forward. So, but one of the things that we had also invested a lot of time in West Virginia in is providing our teachers with resources, providing online resources, providing videos of our teachers actually teaching to our standards. And so part of the work was done as to, how does this version from the national government, how does it not only align, but how can we embed it in a framework that makes sense to West Virginia teachers? And that was a lot of the work that our teachers did in groups over the course of a couple of years in making sense of it. Because we have a pretty specific framework as, you know, how we want the students to progress. You know, we talked about power standards and we had all these, you know, these highlighted But what has caused the issue is standards versus curriculum. I'm sure most of you have seen on social media or somewhere this insane math problem, and here's the problem with Common Core. Or there's been a text that they're saying is, this is what they're, this is what we expect your students to read. It's an inappropriate text. So it's important to remember that our Next Generation Standards are simply what, the skills we expect students to master at each grade level. What has caused all of this commotion and everything is the curriculum. Because, you know, curriculum companies, all they have to do is stamp "Common Core aligned" on something, and there's no one questioning them. There's no one to vet, you know, at a national level, is it truly aligned to the standards? Does it truly meet, you know, truly meet the goals that we want for our students? So I first got concerned when, you know, we're still working on this alignment and this framework, and all of a sudden I'm getting flooded, I was the director of school improvement at the time, I'm getting flooded with all of these vendors sending me their Common Core aligned textbooks and programs and documents. And I'm thinking, there's no way you could have aligned to a whole new set of standards that quickly. You know, it's just not possible. So I want to show, attempt to show here just a real short video that does a better job of explaining the difference in standards and curriculum than, that I might be able to explain. And we produce this, you know, at the Department. of the negative messages that I have seen on my own Facebook or on Twitter or things is really about the curriculum. And it's important to know that the curriculum is truly chosen by each individual county. Yes, there are a wealth of things out there online and there's resources and things available, but there's not a Next Generation or a Common Core reading list. There's not a Next Generation or Common Core way to do math. It truly goes back to the fact that we want, let's try to go back to this one slide. When we think about math and language and any of our subjects, is we want to go back to, how can we teach that standard to our students to ensure that they are developing those critical thinking skills, their problem solving, and they're actually writing? Because we all know that writing makes a difference when, you know, when we're learning. And so it's really about, the curriculum should be about, how are we allowing children to learn those Next Generation Standards? It's no longer about, we've all used the term "drill and kill" or "memorization," because memorizing something, well, yes, I can pass a test and I can make straight A's, but three months down the road, I couldn't pass that test if my life depended on it. So it's, how can we as local boards and as a state ensure our students can master these Next Generation Standards, but how can they problem solve and figure it out themselves? We don't want to just hand them a worksheet and say, you know, "Memorize this, here's your study guide, memorize it, come in and take a test tomorrow." So that's really the practice that the Next Generation Standards are really trying to keep us away from, is that, you know, just that rote memory and working for our, the test, you know, the test on Friday, the memorization part. So I wanted to kind of dispel a few myths that are out there in addition to the, you know, the standards versus curriculum. The largest one is federal government control. And it's really important to know that truly the federal government was not involved, I mean, definitely not involved in the work we did in West Virginia, but the Common Core itself was not a federal government initiative. It was actually led by a group called CCSSO, which is the Council of our Chief State School Officers. So it was the superintendents for all the states coming together, the National Governors' Association, you know, the governors from each of the states, and then pulling in, as I mentioned earlier, those experts that each state had to start looking to see what is the natural progression for students. Now, the federal government control, that message started when President Obama and Senator Duncan started their initiative on Race to the Top, Race to the Top funding and grants. To achieve that money, what they said was, each state had to adopt college and career rated standards. But you had to show that you had college and career rated standards. They didn't actually put into that, you know, you had to adopt, you know, the Common Core standards, but you had to have standards that would prepare your students. Thinking about, why did all of our superintendents from all of the states come together? Why did they decide that we at least needed similarities between our standards? We were all all over the board. And when you think about, I'm sure you have lots of students moving in and out of Lincoln County from other states. You know, I know at one point I felt like I had a sign up in front of my school that said, you know, Cleveland, Ohio, please enter Buffalo Middle, you know? It was just like there was this influx, you know, from different states. So a lot of the gaps, a lot of the issues we were seeing with our students was the fact that in Kentucky, you know, this is just an example, but say, for example, in Kentucky, that they taught multiplication in third grade, but let's say in Ohio, they taught it in fourth grade. So when we had a student go from Ohio to Kentucky, they didn't, they missed multiplication altogether. So really looking to see, what is it we, students need to know at each grade level? And let's get a little bit of uniformity and consistency across the states that calls up the fact that our students are similar and we do see so much transition. The second myth was about, well, this just causes more assessments. We're just testing, you know, we're testing kids to death, we don't have time to teach. And truly, the Next Generation Standards, the assessments are not different as far as, these are the same grade level assessments that were required for No Child Left Behind. And I started looking back to think in a historical perspective and how all of this kind of fit together to talk to you tonight. I thought, you know, really, as a state and as a nation, we should have been up in arms about some of the things No Child Left Behind requires us to do. As a, you know, now it's almost like we're fixing some of the issues that No Child Left Behind brought us. No local control is one of the things that we hear, and again, that kind of goes back to the video. We have the standards of what we want those students to know, but it's actually up to each individual district to decide what they want teachers, materials they want teachers to use, and how they want those standards taught. Because we know from Lincoln and Wayne, and then you go to Berkeley and Jefferson, there needs to be a completely different, you know, way of working with those kids and meeting their needs. And then the final one, that if we followed the legislature at all last year, we had the huge debate over, you know, that we were going to share our students' data with the nation and how we were going to really, you know, there was going to be no privacy at all. That conversation started because of the grants that were provided to provide a state longitudinal data system. And we did receive money from the federal government to create that. And that's what started the whole debate on how we share data with other places. But truly, that money was to help us build a data system pre-K through 20, so pre-K through the end of college, so that we could track our own students, not so other people could track our students, but so we could see when a child graduated from high school, did they choose to go into a career or did they choose to go to college? And if they went to college, were they successful? Because prior to, you know, this is still in the works, that prior to this state longitudinal data system, I had no way of knowing if students that graduated from my high school were successful or were successful or less successful in college than the students that graduated from another high school. That system will allow us within our state to do that. So those are some of the large myths that are out there. One of the things, I mean, I'm sure if there's, you know, I can address others. I did put our current links that we have up here as, as for resources on, you know, the Next Generation Standards. It's a constant update and it has some actual teachers talking, which I think is a good thing, when you hear teachers say, you know, this really has opened up my ability to put my kids in groups and to let them do hands-on activities and problem solve. Because truly under No Child Left Behind and some of the work that we were doing to really teach the test, when I was an elementary principal, you know, we had curriculum that, it was scripted. It said every word the teacher was to say. That was, you know, so this is really taking us away from that and putting control back into our districts and in with our, you know, in control with our teachers. So I just want to, I have a few things to share with you, and then I will take any questions you have. The first thing is a pamphlet that we've put together that can be shared with the unity, parents, teachers. Everybody more than you. One of the things that, you know, the percentages, if you open up that first pamphlet, the percentages are actually there about those students that, you know, that struggle in remedial courses and about the amount of students we have that actually complete a post-secondary education. It just answers the questions that everybody has. What are standards? What do those look like? You know, how are they different and just, you know, in a narrative form? And if you'll look on the back of this sheet, this is something that has really driven the point home with some of our parents, you know, that we've heard from. When you think about that average hourly earnings by education, you know, if we don't, if we can't graduate our students from high school, they're looking at $12.30 an hour. And that's pretty much where they're going, they're going to stay. But you can see as you go up and get into the master's degree level, you're at, you know, $34.42. The same thing when you think about our CTE programs. If we have students that are coming out with, you know, the various levels of certification, then they're going to make a higher salary and have more opportunity than, you know, our students that are either dropouts or just graduating with, you know, with a basic diploma. And the other thing in, what can I do? And these are examples for parents. So, you know, what can I do to, you know, to help my students? The only thing different with, with this sheet is it's just kind of in bullet points. So if you need to address some of the, you know, the concerns, or you want to put something, you know, on a slide or information to share, you have that there as well. And then the last thing that I have maybe there that it's kind of a little thick, but I think it's important to look at, this has all of the standards, K through 12, for Reading Language Arts and Math for West Virginia. And it has the standards listed at the mastery level. So this is, you know, this is where we want all of our students to reach. We'll have some students, when you think mastery, we're looking at, you know, you have the novice, you know, our bottom ones, partial mastery, or mastery students above, and then distinguished. And so one of our REEs has actually put this together. And when you really look at what the standards say, it's hard to argue with the statements. You know, kindergarten and reading, if they're at mastery, then they can actively engage in group reading experiences of literary and informational text. engage in group reading experiences of literary and informational text with purpose and understanding. So as a kindergarten teacher, I can read to my students, and we can have a conversation about what we read. And I really think that this clarifies, um, the difference in that standard versus curriculum. You're not going to see in the standards, those crazy math problems that keep getting posted on the internet and Facebook, or those inappropriate texts that, uh, you know, parents are stating that their students are reading. Kentucky has actually put out a website, their superintendent, uh, listed every standard that they have for Kentucky. And he says, if anybody can go in there and tell me and write a comment about why that standard's inappropriate and why it's harming our children, then I'll bring a team together and we'll look at changing it. So, um, but that's all I had to share, and like I say, I'd be willing to answer any questions or...
Well, I think you hit the nail on the head. There's such a misconception between standards and curriculum. I've seen the second grader, it's two plus two, five, I've learned two plus six, and now they got a four and a half.
Right.
But I think that's really one of the, the lack of understanding.
Right.
Of those.
And that's a lack, we were talking, you know, that's even a lack of understanding even with some of our teachers and principals, the difference between standards and curriculum. But, you know, it truly is a...
Well, that was one of the reasons we wanted to have such a session, so, you know, because we hear these things people throw out, and we all realize it's, much of this isn't political.
Right.
Uh, but, you know, common core and what is it, you know, we've seen all that. That's one of the reasons that we asked this whole discussion, and I appreciate it yourself, but, but teacher flexibility, teachers still have flexibility in their classroom to teach these things the way they wish, right?
Exactly, yes.
We're not going to tell them robotically how to teach.
Right. The only requirements they have in how to teach those is what you as a, as a board decide, or, you know, requirements that you have for them.
All these really are goals, they're standards that have been set, and we have flexibility in how we go about meeting this.
Right. They're just what a kindergarten student needs to know, these are the skills they need to be successful in first grade. You know, these are the standards that they, you know, we want to focus on.
And ideally, we would hope that across the nation, we would have similar...
Right.
Right, standards.
So that, so that we are competitive with other states, and so that if we do have students moving back and forth, they're not getting those big gaps of instruction that they've lost or certain skills.
Ladies and gentlemen, you guys, any questions? Most of us are probably just deciphering.
I know, there were a few that were... Trying to digest things.
Yeah.
Well, and I don't, you know, any, you know, if questions come up or something later, let Mrs. Lucas know, and I don't care, I can come back, or I can address them on the phone with her or with you through email.
Well, this would be very beneficial to us, but, you know, we can take it home and then lead through it.
Right. And I, I think it is just about getting the right message out there. Negative messages always get out, but it's important that we get, you know, the right message out there. I knew it was a problem when my own dad came to me, who doesn't get on social media very often, and said, "Are you one of those people supporting that crazy math?" And so I thought, okay, it's an issue. My dad's kind of out of it. I was like, no, and I started explaining everything to him, and, you know, what the purpose is and why, uh, you know, the miscommunication. He said, "Well, you better get on top of this, young lady."
Well, and that's, you know, here we sit, and then, you know, we'll hear things that, you know, I hate to say it, but, you know, here I'm ignorant so much of this myself, you know, how can I try to explain something that I don't know about? This is our start, I guess.
Right, exactly. And that's what's important, that, that you're willing to, you know, to get the information and then, you know, make the decisions among yourselves to decide what's best for, for your schools.
Whereas we go out to schools or have LSICs or whatever, you know, we may be, be posed with those kind of questions, so we want to have a, some knowledge of it.
Right.
Other than saying, "I'll defer to Ms. Lucas," I mean.
Well, you know, Earl, in, in, in one of your slides, you referenced the high-quality standards, and I gave you all a copy of the high-quality standards, and, uh, talking about the, that, looking at, you know, the curriculum, the student achievement portion of, you know, the, uh, looking at all of the strategies, uh, that, you know, that we want our teachers to use, uh, which will help them, uh, and help their students move these standards and get to, you know, really continue to do that.
Right. I know, and I mean, of course, the school improvement, and that'll always be my love, and, you know, the high-quality standards, and, you know, I can say that, we first started with those about four years ago, of course, we were working with a select group of schools that have been identified, but Lincoln County is one of the counties or one of, you know, the department that really bought, solved the importance of that and how you have to address all seven of those standards to move forward, and have really tried to embed those practices of school improvement, you know, into all of their schools. And that's going to pay off. That, that, that's going to pay off. School improvement's not fast, but it will pay off.
Appreciate that. I remember eclogs, I was telling Trish you were going to say that, I said, "I'd rather go back to eclogs."
Well, that's what I was trying to think.
Those before I go.
Before I go.
So that's before your time.
Yeah.
Really, Mr. Wilkerson, he was referring, I'm sure he might not have admitted.
It's not favorable.
Okay. Anything else from the board? We appreciate very much you coming down.
Thank you.
You've, this has been very helpful to us.
Good.
After we digest a little bit, we may ask you one day to come back, Michelle.
All right. Anytime. I'm placed by.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, let's move into the administrative section. If I could have a motion, please. Mitch Curry. And Mitch Baker.
Item A is a contract with Stonewall Resort to provide accommodations for West Hamlin Elementary Professional Development according to the terms of the contract that was paid for through the School Improvement Grant. Item B, agreements with the following S. advisory aides for the 2014-2015 school year in accordance with the provision of West Virginia Code eighteen A dash one dash eight. Item C, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as bus chaperones over by transportation for students to and from athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings who have provided private vehicle liability insurance and have completed volunteer orientation. Item D, Marshall University student, Ephgell Bush, to perform observation within the elementary and twenty-five hours of the fall semester. Leslie.
Margenace.
Margenace. To complete psychology mentorship under the supervision of Connor Lewis Atkins during the fall semester. Item F, the donation of a John Bean automotive aligner model, number E E W A five one O K, to the Mason County Career Center for the Use in the Auto Technology Program. This equipment was determined to be surplus property outdated and in need of repair and has been replaced by new equipment in the LCA. Yes. Auto technology classroom. Item G, adoption of a resolution to guide Valley Middle School football field, the Messy Williams and Gerald Richard Athletic Field, to honor two all cat fans who provided immeasurable support to student athletes in teams of the school. Item H, out-of-state travel for the following personnel. Item I, the submission of an invasion zone grant, catching them up before they give up for midway in Ranger Elementary Schools. The community school grant totals $300,000 over three years and partners with them in the primary care center. Item J, acceptance of a $20,000 grant from the Greater Canal Valley Foundation that will fund a school-based mental health service program with the Prestera Center as part of the community schools initiative, catching them up before they give up. Item K, to award a bid to Boston Thompson Oil Company to provide fuel and oil products to the school system at a cost of $3.13 per gallon, with the understanding that the contract can be renewed for two additional years based on one-year improvements if mutually agreed. The school system reserved the right to cancel this contract immediately and one written notice to the vendor. Item N, to award a bid and approve a purchase of 245 Lenovo LV laptop computers from recent to, based on four bids received, including vendors on the state bid list, at a total cost of $108,000, and this is paid for from the Title I funds.
Any questions? Any questions? And I'll call for a question. Is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
All right, let's go to finance. Go to motion, please.
Come in.
Show the motion. Thirty seconds, it.
Item A, scheduled invoices totaling $438,563.35. Invoices are available for public inspection at the county office. Item B, approval of annual financial statements as of, for the year in June 30, 2014. Item C, an agreement with the San Otis Office to audit the fiscal, the financial records of individual schools for fiscal year ended June 30 of 2014, according to the provisions of the Account and Procedures Manual, for the public schools in West Virginia and policies and regulations of the Lincoln County Board of Education. Okay, and then, wish you guys got your financial statement package, which had all the financial statements.
We got all Kansas stuff.
So, don't let it be said that I don't do anything. So, you've got the financial statement, which is in the blue book. You've also got a listing of all, uh, the total wages paid to all employees. You've got a listing of vendors less than $250, and you've got a listing of vendors over $250. So those are all the things that were required to give you. Now, I don't know how much you want, I have a real quick little scenario that I can give you guys. Um, so we'll go through this real fast, and then you can ask questions if you want. Okay? So, let's go with this. Um, I'll go back up. Here's, I always just like to say who are our board members and everything is, and who's in this.
Fill my name wrong, I'm going to change it.
Oh, yeah, all of, all the people. So I managed to check that spelling. It's spelled by the bottom.
They usually just leave the E at the end. Make a note of that, Charles. Who's they paying?
Now, here is all the different funds. We have the Fund 1-1. Okay, Fund 11. Fund 11. 4-1, which is our capital improvement, and you can see we didn't have any activity at all on that one. 6-1 is all our special projects. 7-1 is the ARRA, and hopefully, this is the last year of the ARRA money. So, and then this column is our totals. So I've just broken it down, so, you know, if you need something really quick, you can go to this one page and you can see everything that you need. So revenue for the year, all the funds, $43.9 million. Expenses for the year, all funds, $44.07 million. Transfers in and out, and when I talk about transfers in and out, our excess levy money comes into the general fund, and then we have to transfer it over, some of it goes into the special revenue fund, and then some of it is a transfer with the vendor fund. So, that ends up netting out, when you move all the way across, it ends up netting out to zero when we do all the transfers. Self-assets, you know, we sold the property in Parks, um, and Fersburg. And Pleasant View. So we did, sold a lot of things. So that was, we collected $60,979 in net revenue. So then we have our net change and our fund balance. So in the general fund, our expenditures were more than our revenues by $10,000. In the... In the net improvement fund, like I said, we didn't do anything at all, there was no building, no construction going on here, and so there was no activity. In the 6-1 fund, uh, we had an increase of $301,000. And then the 6-1s and the 7-1s, those were all self-balancing, we really don't have to worry about those, and so we're just going to take care of each other, uh, and we're just mostly going to talk about the 1-1. But when you add all those together, we were down $8,760. So this is a really quick, what did we do?
For instance, I'm to sell the assets there. Has that money ever been budgeted into a particular account?
Uh, it just went into the general fund state. I didn't set it aside for any particular item, so it just went into the pot of the general fund.
So it's not been designated for any specific purpose?
No.
Is it still available to be designated?
No, it's just, it's just in the pot. It's in this pot of, of money here. It's in the general fund, it's just in this here.
Okay. Carryover funds from last year, has that occurred yet?
Yes.
Is that shown anywhere in what we're seeing?
Well, let me see how to explain that to you. Uh, the carryo, all the carryover balances just come over and they get reestablished as budgeting items, and what we're seeing is actual money coming in and money going out. So it's almost like two different things that you're talking about. All that budget, it all does carry over and gets all reestablished, all the money comes over. But when we look at this, we're strictly looking at, here's the money I received in, $35 million, here's the payments I made, $35 million, here's the transfers, these are actual transactions.
Some of these other documents that we've gotten, is there any, in any of those, will it show us what the carryover was and how it was?
I've, I've got a little quick sheet that I'll show you.
Okay.
That will probably help you.
All right.
Okay, so that's just, if you need to know, here's your need-to-know information.
All right.
Then for, I'm just going to talk about the general fund now, because like I said, all these other accounts are self-balancing, and this is really the main thing that we do, is worry about the general fund. So our revenue's in transfers and sold property was, when you add them together, was $37.2 million. And then here's your percentage of, you know, the breakdown. Of course, most of it comes from the state. Seventy-three percent of our money comes from the state, that's through the state aid formula. The taxes is 7.1 million, which is 19%. And federal, this, this particular federal money represents our Medicaid that we bill out and, and receive in. And then, I know this is a little busy, but if you look at our general fund expenses and transfers, it's $37.5 million. And as you can see, the biggest portion of our salary goes to the PK instruction, and that's every time, type of expenditure that falls under PK instruction. And that takes up 56% of our budget. We have central office administration, which is a lot of different things, it's not just what we think of as administration, we have liability insurances, and, um, legal fees, auditing, just all kinds of stuff in the central office administration. Our school administration is 5.73%, that's your principals and your secretaries of your schools. And this finance is, I don't know what's wrong with my mouse, $424,000, that's 1.13 of the, of the budget. Maintenance is 9%, or 3.3 million. Transportation is 10%, or 3.9 million. And this food service here, that's just, it's our food service program, it is where we probably just bought some food service items for some of the miscellaneous items. Community service, $123,000. That is, um, that's our 4-H program and our public library funding, and that's funded through the levy, so there's what we paid in the budget, that's $123,000. Capital outlay, and I know I've gave you guys some reports on this, um, that is our QZAP payments. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. That is our, um, I'm going to think there for a minute. It's a fixed asset that we did. We have some construction in progress, it's Lincoln, Lincoln County sidewalk, it's that project, I had to think about it for a minute. And it's a construction in progress, because we haven't completed the project, but that's what we've paid so far on the walkway at the Lincoln County High School. Then the next item... Then the next item is the debt service, that's what we paid on the QZAP bonds. So, that's our interest and our principal payments on our QZAPs. And there is transfers that we talked about, the two million, and student support is four point eight percent. And student support is like counselors, nurses, um, I think the librarians follow into that, and then we have instructional staff support. Right? Then, I know you guys like to see about our wages, so wages and benefits plus twenty-nine, twenty-five million in the general fund, which takes up eighty-three percent of our total, total wages, so, you know, when we are having budget hearings, or when we're going through the personnel season, and that's why it's so important that we try to get those numbers down, because that's where all of our money goes. So, you know, if you look at our general fund, twenty-nine thousand, or twenty-nine million's payroll, five is everything else. So, that's the most critical piece to keeping us all in balance, is keeping that payroll number down. And as well, you know, nobody, nobody wants people to lose their jobs, but, you know, you have to make that decision, do we eliminate jobs, or do we keep our budget in balance? So, so far, we're, we're, we're holding good. Um, here's, uh, just a nice little thing that we do, is how much do we spend for students in our general fund? So, it's nine thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars for students, and as you can see, the biggest chunk of it is in the instructional, the K-12, that's five thousand seven hundred seventeen. And then this one, uh, this kind of will help you see. Now, I kind of rearranged this a little bit better this year, I think, and we're going to compare where we were at last year and where we're at this year. So, last year, when I closed books, our fund balance was nine hundred fifty-four thousand, this year it's six hundred forty-three, so if you can see, our fund balance is going down three hundred ten thousand dollars. Then we have the infamous O-Peds, which we have to show on our books as a liability, but there's probably not a chance that we'll, we will ever pay that, but I still have to record it, show this liability, and it has to play through the account number. But when we're looking at our true fund balance, we're going to add that back in, because we all know we're never going to pack it. So, then there's some other items that we have to account for, we have some non-spendable items, and that is, that particular number is, uh, a retirement forfeiture, where people leave, they're not fully vested in their retirement account, um, so we can't spend it, but it's an asset to us. So, for fifteen, that was sixty-two thousand, the previous year, it was a hundred and sixty-three thousand, the previous year had some prepaid workers caught in it, plus the retirement forfeiture, so there's a change of a hundred thousand dollars in that fund. Restricted levy, we closed the books this year with six hundred and seventy-five, had to be set aside, we can't spend it because it has to be funded, or it has to be used for our levy. Last year, it was one point one million dollars, so you see, we spent a lot of our levy money this year. So, right at the end of the year, we got maybe three to eighty, or we spotted some big high-dollar items right at the end of last year. So, that's why we've seen such a decrease in our levy account. Then our committed, that's our little local projects that, um, if you guys see my special projects worksheet, we have a lot of little projects, like one of the projects is the Lincoln County Walkway, and we have some, um, flood money in there, vocational auction, we just have a whole miscellaneous group of things in our local projects which are committed, and we're saying we're going to spend it for these items, so we call that committed. And then, in our new way of doing, uh, financial statements, you cannot, uh, record some items, and one of those items happens to be, there's an encumbrance number of a hundred fourteen thousand dollars that I can't record, because it will throw us into an episode on the financial statement, so we're not allowed to report that, so I'm trying to get you back to where we really are. Okay? So, our fund balance, looking at it like this, is one point five million dollars, last year we had one point two, so we actually had an increase, right? So, we're now at, uh, we, we increased our fund balance by two hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. The bad part is, when I do the budgets, I have to use some of the money that I think's going to be carryover to balance the budget. So, when I did the budget for this year, in order to fund all our personnel that we have, and all the diesel fuels, and all the different things that we pretty much knew we were going to have, I had to use a million eighty-six thousand. So, you know, and the bad part is, there's an increase of two hundred ninety-two thousand dollars in expenditures, as opposed to what I had used in fourteen. So, that tells me, you know, we probably got some more personnel, and we've got, uh, I know diesel fuel, it al, it always goes up, but, you know, that's accounting for increases in expenditures there. So, when you get down to, how much money do we have that's not allocated out for anything? We have four hundred fifteen thousand dollars. Last year, we had four hundred seventy-one thousand dollars. So, when I, all this, the four hundred sixteen, or the four hundred fifteen, that has already rolled over into this year, as a carryover, so all of those numbers have already been rolled over into this year.
Is that money obligated for any purpose, or is it?
Not if four fifteen is not, it is not. But, you know, right off the top, you know, I know, how many teaching positions have we done, Trish? A couple special and teaching positions, and then a couple aides, and then of course the maintenance positions, so there's five positions in that budget, so that's going to take a good chunk of that. Okay, but that's, now, does that kind of, is that an easy way to understand? Because I think maybe the way I was looking before is.
Well, it's all, unless you're able to sit down and read through all this, it's somewhat confusing. But I just kind of wanted, kind of understand, you know, we, we do a budget in the spring, and then some extra amount of dollars, and then come, um, the July, the new year, after all the taxes and all those things, we get, or we're fortunate, we get some additional funds, we call it carryover. And then, what I have trouble comprehending, I guess, is that money then, where is it placed in all those line items? You say it's just placed in the general fund, or is it placed, it has to be in a particular areas?
However, well, let me, let me see, so, in a general fund, if we have some open POs, which, okay, here, so those had to roll over into fifteen as a purchase order.
Well, but in, in the budget we did last spring for this school year, okay, we established that budget.
Right.
All right. Now, educate me as to how that transition takes place then, if you have additional costs, expenses, then apparently you're using some funds from somewhere else, whether it be carryover or sales of buildings or something, to do that. It's, how, how are we to know when that's done, or how do you let, how can you let us know when you do those things?
Well, I tell you how people know, is when I do, um, you guys approved the budget supplements and budget transfers.
Right.
That's when you'll see all those numbers that I've carried over.
I think from conversations I've had, is we would like to have that pointed out to us.
Okay.
That, uh, now here are some monies that haven't been obligated before, new, I'll use the word new for lack of a better term, and when those funds come in, now, now we're obligating those funds, and like you say, it may be the, some new, uh, positions that we've had in the fund, and we're going to have to use so many of those dollars, because the, the general understanding of the budget we do in the spring, but then the transitions and revisions, or whatever you want to call it, that take place after that, we're really not really sure what happens there.
Okay, well, here, here they are. This number here, that sixty-two thousand's going to carry over, that six hundred and seventy-five thousand gets carried over, but it has to be for the levy, this three hundred eighty-three thousand gets carried over, but it's already committed for the local projects, this hundred fourteen thousand carries over, but it's already committed for purchase orders. So, this, this, so, you know, that would be the balance, but I've already committed a million eighty-six when I did that budget. Had I not done that, then we could say our ending balance was one point five million dollars. But, it's like, oh, I've already used some of that, because I had to use that to balance my budget, which is standard procedure, is, you know, you always have to use some of the, what you think's going to be your carryover.
Well, I think you rejected that, you told us that back last spring, I understand that, but it's just as we get more specific with the, the amounts of money we're bringing in, we'd like to know then, okay, how are we really distributing that?
And this right here, that's your number that's not budgeted. That's it right there.
But like you say, it's going to be less whatever new positions or new expenses we want to wear.
Right, right. So, when we look, you know, when we, we have to put all these new positions in, that's all I've gone to cover those costs with. I mean, you think that's not budgeted?
What about, like, the bus auction, we got, what, forty-five thousand dollars? Is that going to transportation, is that going to something else?
Um, usually, I would just, because they don't really need, I mean, I probably would not put it into their account.
I'm just asking, what do we do with it?
I would just probably, it just goes into the pot and comes in as revenue, but it's not budgeted out for any particular item. It's just our, it's just revenue from sell buses.
Is it part of that four hundred fifteen thousand dollars?
No, because I don't have that money, yeah.
Do you give that money, will you add it to that four hundred fifteen?
Uh, yes, 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 it would be extra money.
Well, see, that's what I'm saying, that's, that's where it gets a little bit fuzzy for me anyway, is to when new funds come in, how they're utilized. I know they're budget supplements and all those, and I'd just like for you to emphasize that when we do this, so we'll understand, well, okay, here's some of that excess money, and we've had to obligate it to these expenses.
Um, and there's really, it's very seldom that you get money that's not already, has restrictions attached to it, but like the buses is one, that's a good example.
Sell property buses, or some.
Um, and then our, um, the water crisis, you know, we got some money in on that, so it was more than our expenditures, uh, from January, from February, yeah, from February.
Well, and then whatever, uh, carryover and any unexpected, or, you know, I guess not, none of the amounts of money, when those come in, that they.
And of course, I'll have to, you know, I'll, I'll eventually put those into the budget, but right now, I have, you know, all the carryover is, is into the budget, and, you know, as soon as I get through this, I'll prepare it to go on the board agenda for you guys to approve all that stuff, and then we'll just go over. And, and you can see, okay, here's where the encumbrance has come over, and here's where the levy money come over. You know, you can just see, because it comes over individually, here's where revenue come over, here's where expenditures.
Well, that's what I'm saying, once, you know, we submitted last year the budget we did in the spring for this year, then these changes that take place, whether it be new monies that are coming in or new expenses, you could just point those out to us.
And that little spreadsheet that I give you guys when we're doing, uh, budget supplements, at the top of it, you can see what our original budget is, and then as we add new items to that budget, you can look at the bottom and see what our new budgets are then, you know.
The thirty, when you give us.
I know.
Two inches worth of stuff here. Yeah, for us to go through there and try to decipher those things, it's difficult.
It is.
Well, I think, I think you had asked once, and, and we relayed, uh, this to you, and I think maybe we did it a couple times, just a one-page, simple, simple thing that.
And so what's.
Was very easy to understand, um, and not all this, but just down and dirty, this is what we got, this is where it's going, and this is.
Right, I mean, these things are great, when you, it's a time away.
And that's mandatory, that's regulatory mandatory items that have, yeah, along with part of it. If, um, if you want to look at your June statement for a minute, please just hold it there, and it's a sheet that, and this has everything that we've done for the year, so the five different pages on it. And that, that first sheet is the statement of cash flow, and up at the top, we have all our beginning caches, this is for the month of June, and then you have your revenues by the funds, and it's on page one. Okay, right there, yeah. Okay, and then, just the different changes that affect the cash flow, and then our ending cash, and then at the bottom, you can see where the cash is, like it's, at First Century Bank, we had one point four million dollars, we took in ninety-three million, and we paid out two point three million, so we ended, uh, with a cash balance of two thousand dollars in our First Century account. At the State Treasurers Office, we started out with one point one million, we took in three point one million, paid out one point four, and, uh, we ended up with two point eight million dollars in Treasury account. The city account, which is strictly payroll, we started out with ninety-five thousand, we actually transfer, in city, we transfer from, uh, the State Treasurers in the city, so we transferred in seven hundred twenty thousand, paid out seven ninety-two, so we ended up with twenty-two thousand there. In our athletic CD account, uh, we started with two fourteen, ended with two, two fourteen. So, when I closed books on June thirtieth, we had three point one million dollars in Then on the next page, this is the one, it was just real simple for you guys to see where our money's going, you know, it's got your instructional, your support, central office administration, the finance department, and actually, that's just the things that we went over, pretty much on our, our charts there. And then there's the unpaid PO, see that hundred fourteen thousand dollars? So, that has to roll over into fifteen, because those are still open. And then the next page, this is, gives you a five-year, and I thought this would probably be something you'd be interested in, um, it's the general fund, and all the expenditures, you've got your current fiscal year, thirteen, twelve, eleven, ten, nine, and then I just kind of noted at the bottom, um, our expenses only one up, thirty-seven thousand dollars from the previous year. Uh, yeah, it really is. And, and then also, you can kind of see, we're down from two thousand eleven, you know, we had, we paid out thirty-eight million, two thousand twelve, thirty-six, two thousand thirteen, thirty-four, and of course, it's not, like I said, we're at thirty-seven thousand dollars.
That's where we've lost personnel on too, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, because we, we've really cut several positions, for example. Um, and then the other thing I just wanted to, um, the next page is your cash balance. Um, of course, our cash balance is down in all cash by eighty-three thousand, but if you look at the top, where it kind of started out, um, in our general fund, our cash is down three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, that you can just kind of see through the years, I mean, if you start over in two thousand nine, we had five point eight million, then we went five point four, four point eight, three point eight, three point six, and now we're down to three point five, so our cash balance is, uh, it used to go down, which is, um, a little concerned. So, those are probably, I think, those are the easiest and simplest things for you to look at, is those first, uh, couple pages there, and then the rest of it, you know, it just kind of compares by the five-year analysis. And as I add to the budget, um, let, just look on page three, no, that's not good, on page two. And if you look under current budget, when we ended the year, we had thirty-six point two million dollars. Of course, when we started the year, we probably had thirty-four million. And then as we, you guys approved those budget supplements, as money came in, then it goes into your budget account there. And then when I do, like I said, when I do the budget transfers for you all to approve, then we'll go with that a little bit more in depth. Okay, so, enough? Or we could get into net assets, and depreciation, disposals, um.
I'm getting dirty looks.
Uh, construction in progress, you know, um.
Now, I think, I think at this point, you know, everybody, you know, we've got a lot of things that we can take on and look over, but, you know, like I say, I'm just, you know, we, we do a budget, and we have a semi-understanding of it.
Okay.
But then as we make modifications to it in the new years, but I, I'd just like to have that emphasized.
Okay, and I can, yeah, I can certainly show you as, you know, I can just, you know, I'll show you what we're starting our budget with, and as it comes in, we'll see, okay, here's where this money went, and everything, so.
And then, like I say, we understand the, the decisions, and that makes it more understandable in a certain way.
But I think this is a real good little, one little sheet there, you know, we can see, that's what you have available, I can use back out all the GANSTI information and the O-Peds, and, um, and what I've already, you know, budgeted out, so, and, and you guys know, you know, anytime there's questions, you can email me, or give me a phone call, and try to, I'll tell you something.